Independent School District 271, today is Monday, August 28th at 7:01 PM. All board members are in attendance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that brings us now to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll keep on moving to number four, recognition of students, staff, and public. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners in the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. Calvin Kiesling, Principal of Hillcrest Community School, would you please do the honors of introducing our friend for this evening, Artistry?
Chair Leva, Superintendent Fujitaki, esteemed board, it's my pleasure to introduce Artistry, Theater Arts, Theater Arts, Visual Arts, and Performing Arts Center here in Bloomington. It is an incredible anchor to the arts here in our fair city. Artistry is known for their visual arts exhibitions. They host 12 to 14 visual art exhibitions a year with over 55,000 people visiting them. They host performances in Black Box Theater, as well as the Schneider Theater, which hosts, has 365 seats, and is well-known for hosting musicals and plays. Many of you have probably attended performances there. And they draw artists, as well as performers, from around the Twin Cities, as well as some who've sometimes moonlight from outside the Twin Cities to perform here in Bloomington. In addition to being a performing arts hub, as well as a visual arts center, they also are key in helping our city grow in the arts. They host, or they were key in playing a role in the creative place-making, which our city started in 2014 with winning an NEA Art Town Grant, and helping the city allocate $400,000 to help create art space, especially in the South Loop here in the Bloomington area. For Bloomington Public Schools, we have a special spot for them in our heart, and they have a special spot for us. Artistry has been a partner with Bloomington for a long time. They were formerly known as Bloomington Civic Theater and Arts Center. I think you probably know the previous name. And they have been for a long time partnering with us in our after-school programming and ALC programming for elementary school, as well as middle schools here. They work with every elementary and every middle school in Bloomington. For our program at Hillcrest specifically, they work with Hillcrest on performing arts and having, hosting a performance every year for our kids, and their music director and other directors come in and work with our kids, as well as they do residencies in school with teaching artists. They are also working with our district to consider expanding our partnership in ways to help support PD for arts teachers, music, theater, visual art, and dance across our district, to allow our teachers to grow in their performing arts and skills as well. It is my pleasure to introduce our friends and our wonderful colleagues, Andrea Specht, Executive Director, and Leah Hughes, Director of Community Partners here tonight.
Thank you.
Alvin, and thank you, School Board, for such a great honor. You really truly are one of our favorite partners. I have teachers who are already asking me when we're going to get the grants and when we get to work in Bloomington Public Schools. So, this week, I'll let you guys off the hook, but I'll be contacting all your principals next week to try to get things planned out. But it's just such an honor and such a pleasure to work with your principals and your specialists and your grade-level teachers, and especially your kids, because they are really important to us and what we do in Bloomington. It's a huge part of our mission and our vision and our values, and we're just so honored that we are able to participate with your school districts in the way that we do.
Ditto. So, this is Leah, our Director of Community Partnerships. I'm Andrea Specht. I'm the Executive Director of Artistry. Thanks so much for having us here with you this evening. Members of the school board and Superintendent Fujitaki, thank you so much for this honor. The only, and I should say, I would like to recognize Leah to all of you really as the driving force behind our partnerships with the Bloomington Public Schools. She really is the Energizer Bunny in our office with respect to partnerships, and we certainly would have nothing close to the depth of the relationship that we do without Leah's work, so I want to acknowledge that and thank her. The only thing that I would add is just to say that seeing that people of all backgrounds, all ages and backgrounds, have the opportunity to access the life-changing benefits of the arts is a key part of what we do, and the Bloomington Public Schools is truly a critical partner in that regard. I certainly don't have to share with all of you that the district is an extremely diverse place, much more so than even many people who live in Bloomington realize. And we recognize that in order for us to live up to our potential to provide arts access, again, to people of all ages and backgrounds, really, we need to work with the schools hand in hand with you so that we're able to provide that access to people of all backgrounds. So, we just appreciate the work that you do in that regard and the opportunity to continue to partner with you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Schumpert?
I have a question for you, if you don't mind.
Before you sit down, I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention, back last spring, I think, when they had the art show for all the elementary schools that was up there, and we were fortunate to be a parent of, grandparent of one of the students who did it, but to go up there and see so many people walking around the second floor, seeing all the pictures and all the artwork, and the kids just standing there beaming that they had actually accomplished all of this stuff, was just, was just great. Thank you for that. And then again, just because recently, we attended the, oh, I can't think of the name of it, I think it had something to do with colors. Joseph and the Technicolor Dreamcoat.
Yes.
And so, please, for your, my indulgence, there was red and blue and yellow and green and purple and brown and so forth.
You too, I understand.
Years and years ago, I was performing in it, and several years ago, my children were performing it. So now, we hope that schools somehow put that on again so that they can have an opportunity for my grandchildren to participate. That's one of the classics that really brings the whole group together, and on behalf of Maureen, Director Bartolata, and I had to keep Dick seated in his chair because he was ready to jump up and sing too. Just a tremendous performance and cast, and so thank you for bringing them all to us.
Thank you. We, we, thank you, and we recently restated, I don't think it's a substantive change in our mission, but we restated our mission to emphasize that really, our goal is to work with our region's most talented artists so that we can do the kind of work that, of course, now, would I blank on our mission statement? Yes, I would. That we would do work that would welcome and develop audiences, again, of all kinds, and open hearts and minds. And we really believe that a production like this, done at the level that we were able to do it with this tremendous talent, and bringing that to Bloomington, again, making that accessible right here in our community, was a good example of that. So, I'm so glad that you enjoyed it. Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to thank both of you for all the work that you do, you know, not just in our community, but also in our schools. And, you know, on a personal note, I have children that attend Normandale Hills, and, yeah, and they, so they get to experience the nightly art start, and it's just a great experience when I go to pick up my kids after their program to see all these kids running around so excited and so happy and showing off their artwork and just watching them come alive through art, and that's, you know, one of the great things about art. And, well, my kids, they really enjoy the, I think it's the clay creatures class, so I have, my house is just littered with little grasshoppers and iguanas and butterflies and all this stuff, and they just love it and looking forward to it again this year, so.
You know, we would be happy to bring some teaching artists and some blocks of clay here. Maybe the board would like to, you know, make some clay creations, and we'd be happy to help you with that, so.
Valley Elementary made a beautiful mural last year, so if they can do it, you all can do it.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, and that brings us to public recognition. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none come forward, we will move ahead to Part A. Part A includes our board business, contracts, finance. Can I, would someone like to move Part A as stated?
So.
Second.
Is there any discussion on Part A of our agenda?
I should have asked for, just, just the contract with the Headway Emotional Health This has been going on for a few years, and has been a successful partnership. I don't know, you could add anything, Eric, or not. I'm reading the contract and so forth like that, you know, it's just, you know, great, but at the same time, there's got to be some anecdotal information about, you know, the success of so many of the kids.
Yeah, excuse me, the Headway Contracting Program has been going on for, boy, a long time, maybe 10 years, and they provide mental health services to students that are setting three EDD, Emotional Behavior Disorder, programs around the district, and work with families and our teachers and our staff and students, obviously, throughout the school year and then in the summertime as well.
Summertime too. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor of Part A as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Part A passes, and that'll bring us to Part B of our agenda, and Item Number One, is approval and ratification of the 2017-19 Master Contract.
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approve and ratify the 2017-2019 Master Contract between Independent School District 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Bloomington Principals Association.
Okay, we welcome Executive Director of Human Resources, Mary Burrows.
Okay, Chair Leva, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board, I'm coming before you tonight to present the 1719 Master Contract for Principals. And the highlights of the agreement are listed in the resolution. They include a 2% salary schedule change for 1718, and then another 2% for 1819. In addition, it included the deductible out-of-pocket in-network maximums changing per IRS, out-of-pocket out-of-network maximum changing per IRS, district contribution to HSA changing per IRS and contract. Holidays, we did remove a floating holiday from the contract, so they went down one holiday. Professional Growth Fund reduced to 1,500 per year, but we increased the cap to 6,000. 403B increased to 3%, and then we also did MOUs regarding professional development usage and contract comparison. And then regular housekeeping changes, such as dates changing to meet current contract.
Sure. Yeah, so you see, you reduced the Professional Growth Fund to 1,500, but increased the cap. What were the old levels?
I believe it was 2,000. I'm trying to think of the cap was.
Four?
Forty, Rod's not here, 45, is it 4,500? I can't remember.
So that was how much they could accumulate over time?
Yeah, that they could accrue, over time, yeah, before it capped out.
Okay.
Other questions?
Well, first of all, congratulations to this bargaining group. That's nice to see. I have a question on the holidays. They removed a floating holiday. Was there one that just, they couldn't figure out a place to put it, or?
No, in the principal contract, they had a floating holiday that they could place throughout the year. They did remove that in order to bargain other things and stay within parameter.
Okay, so they gave something up?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, one other item, if I may. I think I'll try and be quick and get this one out of the way. We have two contracts tonight. Both of them are at Board Parameter 2 and 2. To stay consistent with the way I voted over all the other contracts, for those that pay attention to how I'm voting, this exceeds my own comfort level, and so I'll be voting no for this. The no vote is not an indictment of any member of any bargaining unit. It has more to do with the long-term sustainability of keeping these contracts viable and alive. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, it's nothing personal, it's something that I hope that I'm wrong with, but I guess I won't know for a while. So, I thought I'd just get that one out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about this one? Just want to say, I was on this team, we had not a lot of sessions, what, four?
Four.
So, yeah.
Maybe five.
Yeah, four or five. So it was good to be able to get this done, get it worked through quickly, so, thank you. Although, well, we'll do roll call, I guess, so we'll start over on this end.
Yes.
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 No.
Okay, thank you. And so then that brings us to Number Two, approval and ratification of the 2017-19 Contract between the district and Clerical, the Association of Bloomington Clerical.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approve and ratify the 2017-2019 Master Contract between Independent School District 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Association of Bloomington Clerical.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, I'll continue the contract talk. I'll, first of all, let people introduce themselves, because they do a much better job than I would.
Mary Lynn DeBorck, President.
I'm Zadie Martin, one of the attorneys for the association. I'll go over the terms, and then they can add anything that they wish to add at the end, if that's okay. I am happy to announce that we've reached an agreement with the clerical unit, and it has been ratified by membership, and so it's before you tonight for consideration. Tendative agreement included wage schedule improvements of 2% each year of the contracts for steps 1 to 6. We did do a schedule adjustment to help raise the starting salary in step 1s to be more competitive to what we were seeing in the market, which took some maneuvering on the schedule. So, you know, it was good to get that worked out and go through that. It's always painful to kind of do that when you do it, but we worked it out within Board Parameter. We also raised the out-of-network, out-of-pocket maximums for health insurance, again, per the IRS and per the Insurance Committee. Same thing with district health insurance contribution both years, and HSA contributions year 2, we were increased due to IRS regulations changing. We increased district provided identity protection to additional three years, an additional three years from next February for all members that were affected in the data reach. Agreed to form a committee to review job descriptions and standardized classes, and we'll be starting that work probably, I would say probably October would be a good time to start that, to go over job descriptions and try to make them more standard and not as many an individual, I think is our goal. And then housekeeping changes, so, changes to contract based on, you know, years changing and such. Any questions?
And all of them?
I just want to thank all the people on the negotiation teams from both sides, Ally Blessing, Judy Berg, Stresser, Diane Simkins, and Stephanie Weiss, plus myself, our counsel, Zadie Martin, and her partner, Joel Button, as well as the district, Mary Burrows, Rod, Zee, and Jim Sorm. It was a marathon, three days, but we got it all done, and it worked out great.
Yeah, and I think I just wanted to say that usually, we get to bargain every two years. This time, it was even more unusual, because we bargained twice in six months, so we got even more experience. But it is often the case that in districts like these, the teachers are the largest budgetary group, they're the ones that drive the district, and it is easy to fall into that idea that they are the group that matters the most, because it's true, they are. But I think, in this district particularly, Mary does a really good job of making sure that we don't feel like we're just afterthoughts. And, you know, of course, there's a pattern that's set, but she does really good active listening to try and pretend that our things really matter, but really, she actually considers what we need, because our staff works different hours, they get different pay, and so the things that they need are really sometimes a little bit different. And I think one of the examples is the agreement we made to change the schedule, and for the employees that work, who are trying to get a living wage, and for the district to get really good people coming in, I think raising the minimum was really important, but we also had to stay within Board Parameters, and we had to trust, trust each other, I think, really, to be able to shift that in a way that we could explain to our folks, that she could explain to you all, and that really did what we wanted to do too. So, I just wanted to appreciate her for that, and again, thank the board and the committees for their work.
That's it.
It was, it was a good, it was tough, but it was, we got it done in three days, three sessions, and it was, it was good talks.
Director Sorm?
I just have a question. How many are in the Clerical Association of Bloomington Clerical?
About 132.
132. And, as many of you know, I try to get around to the schools, so I think that's about 120 that I know personally. But it's just the idea that a lot of them have been around for a long time and are valued and appreciated, and sometimes take an extra effort and responsibility from what they normally A good partnership combination is the principals and the secretaries of the school and some of the other people, and so I said, we honor that, we value that, and we want to continue to do that. So when we have met and we've talked about some of the things, I hope that the group does appreciate that. We appreciate them and want to continue to help out where possible.
Yes, I think we feel that.
Yep.
And that's, again, a little bit unusual, but we, I think that's really a nice thing about this district. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Well, first of all, thanks for coming, and congratulations. It's nice to see members of bargaining units come to the table with smiles on their faces.
Yes.
This is, this is a good thing. Let's keep this one going. I like this. I want you to know that I make no distinction when I work my way through buildings. It doesn't matter where, what bargaining unit you're participating in, you're all special. So, I hope you know that, and if you didn't, now you're hearing it from a board member.
Thank you.
I appreciate the work that everybody does, so, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, just want to say once again, thank you for all your hard work in getting this done so quickly, and it's nice to be done before school starts, isn't it?
It is so nice to do this.
All right, so.
My contract expires.
All right, so we'll start on this end again.
Yes.
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 No.
Thank you. And that'll bring us to our negotiations update.
Good.
Yep, we're good, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, this is my speech now? I wrote my paper at home.
Okay, negotiations update. I'm happy to announce that we have reached tentative agreements with all bargaining units. Food service is ratifying tomorrow night, so I'll be able to give you an update on if that group ratified sometime, probably tomorrow evening. They're pretty good at turning around and telling me, or by Wednesday morning. Custodial transportation in Perez, I'm not sure when they're meeting with their groups. I know Perez are, I think, are probably meeting, you know, maybe second week of September, but he was supposed to tell me the date, and he hasn't gotten that back to me yet. And custodial transportation, they're just now starting to get ready to do that, so everything is done on our end at this point, so.
So, we just wait, and so it would be the first or second meeting in September, most likely?
Probably.
Okay.
So, yeah, Mary, I just want to, you know, take the opportunity to thank, thank you and your team for all your hard work in getting this done, and congratulating you for meeting this milestone. I know it was probably about six or seven months ago, and we said we want to get all of our contracts done before school year started, and we were kind of thinking that's going to be, that's quite ambitious, and I don't know if we'll be able to get it done, and here we are, we got it done.
Considering most of them, we didn't start till June or July, yeah, it was, it's been a busy summer for everybody, and, I mean, there were times, I think, when Rod and I were going into sessions, going, okay, which group, okay, where are we in this group? Because you start combining all of them together in your mind when you're bargaining like that. But it went well, and everyone talked well, and we had good negotiations.
I'm hopeful this is the trend, that this is what we start doing more regularly from now on, because, you know, as a, as a teacher, we do not like coming back to school and we don't have a contract. My district that I'm in now, we don't have a contract. And I'm already hearing people that are saying, well, why don't we have a contract yet? So, it's nice to get these contracts done before our employees come back in September, so, thank you for that.
Thanks. It's not just me, it's all teams working together, yeah.
Well, you and your team, I'll tell you.
Both sides.
You want to hire her or something, go down here? She can shake things up and.
Hard time, just like.
I just wanted to add on that note, it was a lot of work this summer, so, you know, a lot of people came in, maybe not on their regular workday, in negotiating those, so thank you for all the people that came into, in all the different contracts to get it all done this summer too, because I think everybody went above and beyond to make sure they, not only your team, but the other team. So, thank you, everyone, for, for getting here and getting it done. I do, I do think that, I also like it better that, that we're doing, it seems to be, you're doing longer days and not, you know, a shorter amount of time. I think that is more productive also than maybe what we were doing before. I like, I like having a longer time and getting more done, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Right, well, thanks all around. Thank you. And that'll bring us to Number Four, the District Achievement Report. Now, invite Dave Heistad to come, give us an update on the MCA's. Wait, MAP, says on my agenda, MCA, but I believe we're getting a MAP update?
That's the one I have.
Chair Leva, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board Directors, will give a brief review of the MAP data and spend more time with the information that is new to you, the MCA data.
We're getting both, sorry.
So, so you will see both. I just, I thought it would be good for the board to celebrate again the very strong results we saw on the measures of academic progress, the MAP assessment, which is really our bread and butter assessment of how much students are learning during the year. The way we calibrate it is that we compare ourselves to national growth norms, so that each student in first grade through ninth grade will have a cohort of students who started at the exact same point last year, and then we compare to see if they made as much growth or more than the national norms. And the average for the norms would be 50% of the students hitting their growth target and 50% not, because it's an average. And so, we have set a goal that not only every grade level, but every subgroup have at least 50% of the students hit their growth targets. And as you can see on the first graph, the, the range of percentages goes from about 55% in sixth grade, all the way up to 64.2% in ninth grade. So every single grade level achieved that goal of at least 50% of the students hitting their, their growth norms. And then, when we look at the breakout by racial, ethnic, poverty, English language, learner status, and special education, we see only two groups, and Hispanic students were at 49.9, so they're virtually at 50% hitting the growth targets. It was EL in general, only 47% hit their growth targets, so, so we came, we came close to having all subgroups hitting that 50%. And you can see, in some cases, we had very large increases. For example, Asian students increased from 58% to 62%, American Indian students from 55% to 57%, white students from 57% to almost 64%, and free reduced, students receiving free or reduced-priced lunch increased from 49% to almost 51%. So, it is pretty much across the board increases in terms of the learning rates for students and literacy, and this was very positive news. When we look at the overall district goal for the QCOM Pro- When we look at the overall district goal for the QCOM program, we had set a goal to increase at least 3% from 54% to 57% hitting national growth targets. And we ended up with 58.2%. So, all the staff reaped the benefits of reaching the district goal. And then, most of the schools also hit their goals as well. Each school received a report parallel to what the district report looks like, so they could look at strengths and weaknesses within and across grade levels and within and across categories of racial, ethnic, poverty and English language learner. So, the overall summary is here. This was the highest growth rate we'd experienced in three years. And as I mentioned, all grade levels exceeded the 50% target. When we look at the, the mathematics, measures of academic progress, we see that we had a range of growth from 46.8% in sixth grade, all the way up to 66% in ninth grade. So, it was only that sixth grade group in mathematics that didn't achieve the 50%. But they did increase by 2.4% from last year and 3.0% from two years ago. So, the trend is very positive. And you can see that some of the, the grade levels were up to, up to 64% in third grade. That was an 11-point increase. And, and we, we basically overall had a four-point increase in the percentage of students hitting their growth targets. And then, when we looked at this by racial, ethnic group, we see that most racial, ethnic groups were close to 50% or above. African-American students were at 49.2% hitting their growth targets, Hispanic students 48.9, and American Indian students 49.6. So, we did see, you know, most of the growth in mathematics was achieved by white American students with a six, six and a half point increase. So, in this case, the learning gaps, gaps between white students and students of color and between full-price lunch and free and reduced-price lunch students did increase. And as we'll speak later, mathematics is kind of our challenge area with the MCA's as well. The performance was very good on the map, but it, it appears that our, our white students are making up most of the, the growth in, in the, the mathematics. So, we do have some challenges. Sixth grade was below the, the rate of 50%. And gaps persist between white and Asian students, who have the highest learning rates, and American Indian, African-American and Hispanic students. Now, we move to the Minnesota MCA III, the, the comprehensive assessments that measure our state standards. And you can see there's a four-year trend here. Basically, we've stayed fairly stable over the last four years in reading from a percent proficient of 59.3 in 2013-14 to a percent proficient of 59.7 this year. We saw a decrease very similar to what the state saw in reading. And, and most of the grade levels stayed approximately similar to their performance the previous year. Grade three, however, had a decrease from 58 to 53% proficient in reading. Grade four, a 4% decrease, while we had a 5% increase in seventh grade and a 2% increase in 10th grade. Overall, the state proficiency rates have maintained a fairly level perspective, just like our own. It is true that the MCA's are not as sensitive to growth as the map test, and they tend to be quite long and difficult tests that some students, I think, find quite challenging. One of the things that I've been hypothesizing is that the difficulty of these tests may have increased over the last few years as the vendor adds extra items to the test. Because we're trying out items for other states, and the legislature has mandated, mandated additional items above and below grade level. I have a feeling that students that are highly proficient in these tests will enjoy taking more items. Whereas, students, especially in mathematics, that are struggling, might have a motivational problem after they've finished so many. And that's one thing I brought up with members of the, the testing community at the state level too. I know there, the state is discouraged that they saw a decrease both in reading and in math, but I think this may be part of, part of what's going on. And the other thing is that proficiency is very, is very highly correlated with challenge, challenge factors like poverty, English language learner status and special ed status. Those are the three highest correlations, whenever you do the correlation between individual student scores and their demographic factors. And I borrowed this idea of a challenge index from Jim Angermeyer, the former research director, who used this idea extensively, where you would put, put down a point for every, of every district, according to the percent proficient, going up the Y-axis and the challenge index across the X-axis. And the challenge exit, index would be the proportion of students who are free and reduced price lunch, the proportion EL and the proportion of special ed. And you'd add those three together. And you can see it forms almost a perfect correlation from the, the districts with the highest challenge indexes, Richfield and Brooklyn Center, to the ones with the lowest challenge indexes like Edina. And basically, Edina is perfectly predicted just by these three factors, where there're, and most of the points along this, what's called a scattergram, are right around that regression line. The points that are above the line actually are doing better than predicted based on these three factors. So, you can see that Bloomington scores higher than its neighbors with similar challenge index. Mountview does, West Tonka does. And then, there are some districts that underperform according to the prediction based on, on the index. But in general, you can almost predict, just by these three factors, how a district is going to perform. And then, as I found out in Minneapolis, as the challenge index increases, the percent proficient decreases. And people may think, "We're not doing a very good job because our percent proficient is decreasing." But you have to really look at the growth to know if that's true. You really have to look at how much learning is taking place. And that's where I'm leading you, is to look at, there's still a little bit of growth analysis on the state website. And so, I'm going to show you what that looks like. First of all, here's the proficiency of the district versus the state in terms of reading proficiency. And you can see that the state of Minnesota, oh, they actually went up by, up a point where we went down by a point. It's in mathematics where we both went down. But you can see there hasn't been a lot of growth since 2013-14 on these state tests. By subgroup, you can see that the gaps are very large, with white American students at about 75% proficient, Asian students at about 68% proficient, American Indian 56, Hispanic 33, African-American 41. Students who are served in English language learner programs, we had 10% of those students that were proficient. But it is the case that if you are proficient on the state test, then you're exited from EL services. So, that number will always be in the teens, or even, I've seen lower in other districts. Special education maintained about the same at 28.6%. So, these are proficiency rates. And then, this is what the growth looks like. And so, back 10 years ago, the legislature asked me to be the chair of a team to come up with the state growth model. And I came up with a very simple model, basically saying, students are either making high growth, low growth, or average growth. And I could tell you that the technical definition is basically if you're a half a standard deviation about the, above the state norms, you're making high growth. If you're a half a standard deviation or below, you're making low growth, and the kids are in the middle or in the red. Well, you can see that Bloomington in reading had 27% of the students making low growth versus 29% of the state. And so, we're doing better in terms of having fewer students making lower growth. And then, we're also having more students making high growth. So, versus the state, we are, are providing more value added to our students in terms of MCA growth. The original norms from 10 years ago had 31% low, 31% high and 38% medium. And you can see there are more in medium growth now at both the state and Bloomington. But we're shooting for at least 31% making high growth. And so, I hope to see these pies, pie charts diminish the green and increase the blue in the future. Now, when we look at, at the overall findings, then, we've stayed fairly stable over the past four years. We have decreases at some grade levels that are offset by increases in other grade levels. So, our overall reading performance has stayed relatively the same. So, district-wide math proficiency, we did see a large decline. So, we saw 57% of the students proficient in math last year, from 50, 2015-16 to 2016-17, we dropped three and a half points. We did see increases at grades three and grades five, but the other grades all had decreases. And so, the state decreased as well, as I, I mentioned, but the, the district decreased more. So, when I was talking to our colleagues at the Summer Leadership Academy, we were talking about this being the year of math. And in fact, we are all positioned to roll out a new math curriculum. And a number of schools, I think a third of the schools, or a third of the classrooms are piloting this new curriculum. And, and I will look to see how though, that third of the classrooms do compared to the others. And we're also rolling out the math standards in a similar manner to what we did with reading. So, the last few years, we've been emphasizing reading and literacy and the standards. And now, there'll be that kind of intensive staff development in mathematics. And I hope to come back and show you that not only the growth has increased, but also the proficiency in mathematics. When we look at the state trend, we've seen proficiency go from 63% down to 59.9% for the state, and for the district, from 61.7 to 53.7. Some of this is correlated with increases in challenge, but the challenge index doesn't account for all of it. So, we do have an area, so I'd say the glass is three-quarters full, with reading showing very strong progress in both the MCA and in the, the map. But in terms of the MCA math, that was our area of weakness. And when we look across subgroups, we see that white students declined by about 3.6%, African-Americans by almost three points, Hispanic students by about three and a half points. And the group that increased was American Indian. They went from 50.7 to 50, I mean, 50.0 to 50.7% proficient. And there's a small number of American Indian students relative to other groups, but they made a, a nice increase. And then, finally, the math growth. This is what I would really like to see a big shift in, would be to see the high growth go from 27% to at least 31%, and the low growth to go from 30 down to the 20s. And that would indicate that the students are making progress better than the state norm and that they are growing towards those state standards at accelerated pace. The good news is that this growth is still available on the website. The not-so-good news is that the new accountability system submitted by the state of Minnesota does not include a growth model anymore. So, the, basically, the only way that, that schools will get credit for improvement is if a student goes from not proficient to partially proficient, or from partially proficient to proficient. If you, if you stay the same, and many schools have a lot of, of students already proficient and, and advanced, above proficient, well, then you get lots of credit for that. And you only get credit if you jump over the bar. And we have schools that have lots of students who are new to the country and students that have a ways to go before they hit proficiency. You could make a, a couple of years of growth within that not proficiency band and not get credit for it, because you have to jump over the bar. And I've, I lost the battle on, on my committee to, to have the growth model stay in place. We will do the kind of analysis that, that we believe is necessary to see if we're truly making progress on, on the MCA growth. But unfortunately, districts that don't have a map test or don't have the sophistication to get into the, the growth data for the MCA may be missing that. So, I just thought I'd mention that. It's, it's more of a proficiency-oriented accountability system. And the, the purpose of the system is to identify the bottom 5% of schools in the state. It's not to identify schools that beat the odds. So, Superintendent and I are working with other districts who are interested in finding beat-the-odd schools. We'd like to find schools that are doing exceptional job with English language learners, schools that are knocking the socks off the math growth, see if we can learn from them, and we'll continue to do that, that work. But that's my presentation for this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Director Stegoff.
Thank you, Chair Oliva. Um, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts to maybe help the conversation nationally and in the state on the difference between growth and proficiency, because we seem to have people that don't understand the difference and people that are maybe in, in positions that don't understand that. So, thank you for that. And, you know, especially not only about the changes that you talked about to the MCA's that you talk about locally, but the things about, you know, showing the challenge index and, and getting the growth at least on the state, even though they didn't put it in the report. And I just wanted to say, you know, keep at it, because, you know, maybe in the future, as more people listen and figure this out, then the state will eventually put that in there too. Let's keep hoping. So, thank you for your efforts on behalf of our students and our teachers.
Things tend to be cyclical in the state. And we may come back around to it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Rushton?
Yes, David first. Thanks for coming. It's always fun to see, to see you at the table here. I don't know anyone who's more interested in diving into numbers. So, I have, I have one question, and I'm, I'm wondering if in these numbers, in this data somewhere, you can wiggle your way in there to see how much, if any, does a student's attendance affect the results that we're seeing on the graphs and charts?
Thank you for that question, Director Bergstrom. Last year, we had an extensive analysis of attendance, where we showed that the students that attended at least 95% of possible days had not only higher proficiency, but much higher growth rates. And it's been confirmed in high-poverty and low-poverty schools in our district, where they've found the same thing, that students that attended less than 95% tended to have lower growth than students who attended at least 95%. We have a small challenge with our data system right now with the Infinite Campus, and we weren't able to get the data for attendance in time for this presentation. But as soon as I get a clean download on the membership days and the attendance days, I will get that to you. And I'll, I'll, I'll do that analysis. And I'll, I'll, I'll do that analysis every year where I'll say, okay, are we seeing the same thing? Is it 95%? The state is likely to adopt 90% as the goal for individual students. And they'll call the indicator chronic absence and kind of emphasize the, the truancy aspects. We like to have a higher goal of 95% and emphasize that it's true for all students. Even those students that, you know, wouldn't be absent like a truant student can improve their overall performance by attending more. So we will continue to bring you those data. When we took down the membership days, I got like 5,000 membership days for some kids. So I knew that wasn't quite right. So as soon as that's clean, we'll, we'll get you those data.
Jim had his hand up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I hope you can still be here at 8:30 because that's probably how long it'll take us to go through some of this. You had mentioned that, that the state, the legislature had added some new additions to the testing requirements on one of the math applications?
Yeah, two years ago, and I was involved in the testimony. The legislature was interested in pursuing the MAP test and, or adapting the MCA test to be like the MAP in, in terms of having items that were above grade level and below grade level. That, that was passed by the legislature. But then I found out that they didn't replace items that were at grade level with these off-grade level items. They added it to the test. And so, they made the test longer. Now, when the auditor saw that in this recent report, he, he recommended they get rid of off-level testing. And the idea was actually to make the test more like the MAP and make it more adaptable. It wasn't to make it longer. So I take part, part blame for the test being a little bit longer. I do think that the, the MAP is very efficient in terms of using information at grade level so that it can then branch off to above grade level or below grade level. And that was the intention of the, the House that put forth the, the language, but it wasn't implemented. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not sure if those items are gonna stay in the, in the test. I have a feeling they probably will be dropped from the test. And, and we just won't have an adaptive test for our MCAs. What we'll have is, well, two different types of tests. We're gonna have our MAP test, which is adaptive, which is designed to measure growth. And we're gonna have our MCAs, which are all on grade level and are there to measure proficiency. And, you know, we won't be able to save time and energy by combining the two tests into one. We're just, at least for the foreseeable future, gonna have two different tests designed for different purposes.
So it is political.
It was a little.
And all around the state, with testimony from all around the state, and then with the Department of Education involved also. This is another one of those situations where, you know, do we go for what we know as good history and good testing and good matrix and all that? And then hope that something happens because we have enough data to show growth and proficiency?
Yeah, I think it's good for us to, in this case, be a leader in the area. When we put in for innovation zone, we can emphasize some of the differences in assessment and the validity of those assessments. And we may be able to convince folks that Bloomington should be allowed variance from, from testing. I don't know if that's gonna be possible this first time around. But I think, I'm disappointed when I hear districts talking about getting rid of their MAP testing to save money because I have a feeling they're gonna really miss that growth information that isn't available on the MCAs anymore. And so, I'm glad that, that our plan is to keep robust assessment and to do so in an efficient way so it doesn't take too much time for teachers and students. But I do think the intentions of the legislature seven, several years ago were similar to what our legislative committee proposed was to look at a more efficient way of testing by having one test instead of two. And that just didn't win the day, at least last year.
Whether it'll happen again is always dependent on.
Maybe 10 years before it comes up.
The way the wind is blowing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent question.
Director Cormen, do you have a question?
Yes, comment question. Thank you, Doctor. I said you always bring very interesting information. You know, every time that I hear the word MCAs, I, I get this kind of funny feeling in my stomach. And, you know, I just wanna share with all of you that part of the last meeting that I had at the Legislative Committee for AMSD, part of that conversation was related to MCA, MCAs. You know, hearing school leaders, superintendents, school board members say, you know, how concerning it is that this, that we continue to use this type of test to measure how much our students know or, you know, proficiency and all that. And how hurtful it is for our students and how meaningless it has become for families and for students too. And, you know, we hear of so many students opting out those, those tests, right? Not taking them, especially our high school kids, not only here, but in every other district. Now, I also hear that part of the ESA is the requirement of the MCAs.
Yes.
And I, we already know that those are required, but, you know, you can still kind of opt out. And normally, nothing happened. There were not bad consequences because of that. But this year is gonna be different where if the student does choose to not take the test, that is gonna affect the, the student, right?
Thank you. Director Cormen, I should, I should mention that for the audience that this coming year, the students who don't take the test, if you have less than 95% of those students take the test, they will be counted as, as if they got a zero on the test. And so, if you had 100 students in your school and only tested 90, and let's say 45 of them passed, it used to be that, that you would divide 45 by 90 and you'd get 50% proficiency or passing the test. But now, you'd take the 45 and divide by 95 because 95% of your kids have to take the test and those extra 5% are all given zeros. So there are consequences for schools, especially that are high poverty, that may be on the border of that bottom 5%, that they could be pushed into that 5%. What we're finding statewide, however, is the people that are opting out by and large are upper-middle-class white students. And, but that's not always true. But it is the fact that it is the federal law that you have to have 95% tested, but it's also the federal law that you have to have posted the opt-out procedures in a simple form at the state level that parents can access. So it's a real, you know, it's a real quandary.
And I think it's important, you know, that families know what, what's, what's happening this year as well.
And what I do, I, I recommend that, that families take the MCA test to get the information that's available on how their students are doing versus the standards. Not to put any pressure on students for, for the outcomes. It's a measure of school effectiveness and district effectiveness. It's our accountability as a district and as educators. It is not high stakes for kids. Then nevertheless, it's always good if students can do their best and get a good breakfast and, you know, good night's sleep before they take it so they, they can demonstrate the best that they can. Many of us wish that the, the assessment information was more valuable for teachers, that it was instructionally useful, and that you could do more diagnostic work with it. But it does at least give you that one piece of information, is my student proficient yet? And how close are they to the bar?
Yeah, and then the student does not take the test, then it counts as a zero.
Yeah.
And that's gonna affect their student. So I do appreciate this growth model that we have in Bloomington. And I think it's important that we continue to push for that. Now, the other comment that I had is I did notice, and it's interesting that you talk about the math curriculum because I did notice that difference between 2013 and now and, you know, the, how the number is dropping, especially in our communities of color, students of color. And I was wondering about that, you know, was there something in the curriculum that maybe we needed to look at? Is there something that other school districts are doing that maybe we can, we can also use? So I, I truly appreciate, you know, your comments regarding that. And I think it's important that we also look beyond what the curriculum is and also look into, you know, what kind of support, other support we can provide to our students. And, you know, there are many students that could come from another, from other countries and they, sometimes there are levels of math that are actually higher than the levels they find here in their grades. But because of the language barrier, then, you know, it shows as they not performing as well or they cannot understand, you know, how it works here. And it doesn't really show how much they know.
There is a heavy load of, of English language in the math test, a lot of, of word problems. So I think that is a factor for students that are struggling with English.
Exactly.
I should mention that we also did some analysis of our flipped instruction at fifth grade where we're using the technology in a different way, doing the practice kinds of items at home and the teachers interacting with the students and getting immediate feedback. And we found very large positive effects for that flipped instruction at fifth grade. So there may be instructional techniques in addition to the curriculum itself that seem to be beneficial to students. And we are exploring those areas and doing evaluation to, to find out what, what really works for our students in math.
Exactly. And finally, I find it very unfortunate that NDE actually advocates for those MCAs, you know, a lot of people there.
Well, they are the state tests. They're our measure of the state standards. And I do think we should emphasize the importance of those tests for what they can do. But I'm really pleased that we're supplementing with tests that are sensitive to growth and really do hold ourselves accountable for how much learning takes place during the year.
Right.
That was a very safe answer.
Oh, you have more to say?
Yeah.
No, I just have a thought after all this.
Well, I have a quick question and then a deeper conversation question. The first one is what was our opt-out in Bloomington percentage-wise last year?
Well, we had 75 students opt out of the tests last year. We had 36 the year before. So you could say it's a large increase, but 75 out of 10,000 students isn't, you know, or 6,000 students that are tested with the MCA isn't a large percentage. Whereas in Minneapolis, all of one high school opted out and 2/3 of another high school opted out. And so, we don't have that same kind of magnitude of problem, but it is increasing.
Okay. And then my, my comment question is kind of, you know, picking up on what Director Steigl was saying and, and thinking you've, you know, talking about the difference between growth and proficiency and how we really need to emphasize the, the growth aspect here. And I know you said you, you lost the battle about keeping the, the growth model, but I would encourage you to keep on fighting that fight.
Oh, thank you.
Because I think it's important that we get that message out there, that growth is really a better measurement of what our schools are doing. I always get so frustrated when, when people go on these ranking websites and look at the test scores and say, well, this school has higher proficiency, so it must be better learning. And they emphasize learning more than, than this school. And I always say that, you know, the proficiency tells you more about the students that attend that school than the learning going on in that school. Because many of those kids that are proficient were proficient before they came to that school. So if you wanna see how good that school is doing, look at the growth. So that leads into my question. Do we, do we have anything about the growth per school? And so, we can look to see which of our schools are making the most growth? And do you have all those numbers at the top of your head that you can regurgitate? And tell me like what schools we have that are making the highest growth?
Each of the schools received a report similar to this with the pie charts. And then I found six schools that were similar in terms of challenge index. And so, compared all of their, their proficiency and growth to similar schools in the state. And so, I visited one of the schools this morning that had higher growth than any of the comparison schools and extremely high rate of growth in reading compared to other schools in our district. And that happened to be Indian Mountains. So we have beat the odds schools, schools with high challenge and making great growth. And, and there are other schools too that I, I shouldn't just emphasize one. But all of those data are available on our Google Drive. And so, people can access and look at the various reports. And I will get them all on the website as well so that the whole community can see them because this is public information.
Well, that's good to know because I'm thinking people look at the proficiency of any mountains, they might think, well, I don't wanna send my kid to that school.
It's an excellent example.
They conflate that thing where proficiency is low, so learning must be low. When you look at the growth, well, they're the highest. So that's probably the best place to send your kids.
That was true. In Minneapolis, Bethune Public School had the highest poverty and percent students of color and, and won an award for the highest growth. And the teachers were, you know, so ecstatic, they were crying, you know? They'd never been recognized because they're all always a low proficiency school.
So, yeah, we really should be recognizing our schools with high, high growth, I think. And we need to be showcasing that and, you know, rewarding them for their accomplishments so people know that. Because I think many people don't know that. So, and, you know, I really like the MAP and I encourage the district to continue. I know it's more testing and, and parents are sick of all this testing. But the MAP testing is, to me, so much, tells you so much more than the MCAs. And I wish we could substitute the MCAs with the MAP, but unfortunately, we're not able to. So until we can do that, I think we still need to keep doing the MAP because it shows you the growth of your students and it's much more accurate data.
There were very few families that opted out of the MAP. In general, teachers and families find it more useful information and don't opt out.
All right. Well, thank you.
Director Steigl.
That leads perfect into what I wanted to suggest. So when you talked about with our new innovation zone, that we could possibly convince the Department of Ed to let us use the MAP instead of the MCAs, that might be something. I was sitting here thinking that we have this Bloomington Advocacy Council that three of us sit on that we started recently and that may be something that, that group we could bring to help you with that. And so, that maybe we could help push with you to have them at least let us be the example in the state to try that. So.
Yeah, and thank you, Director Steigl. We definitely will do something in the area of alternative assessment. And if we can't replace the MCA because of the law, we'll still do the analysis to show how predictive the, the MAP is of the MCA and how useful it is, especially within an innovation zone as the evaluation tool for are we ma- making good growth? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, I was at MD meeting with an assistant commissioner. And he shared that the commissioner had charged him to look at how the MD's assessment program could be possibly changed. And she, the commissioner, shared that she had three concerns that she wanted addressed with his possible reforms. One was the fact that the testing, the tests were taking too long, were getting longer and longer because of the number of items being added to the tests was growing each year. Second is that the tests take place earlier, early in the year before all the standards are covered. Third is the, the growing opt-outs. And the fourth was she would like to see if the ACT could take the place of the high school MCA. Now, that was shocking because that's the first time I've heard the MD ever say that they're open to doing any kind of change to testing. So Dave and I went back to visit the assistant commissioner last week and we had a conversation with him. And the takeaways are as follows. The IZ bill is a possibility. It's a long shot, but it's a possibility. They're looking at Dave to come up with some ideas on how to change it. They see Dave as the premier. They see Dave as the premier testing guru in the state, so they'd like to see what he comes up with to address these concerns. But what the MD said is that they are limited in what they can do based upon what the feds allow through ESSO.
Right.
But, but we all agreed that the feds have given, been giving us mixed signals. They've been telling us that they'd like to give the states more flexibility, less federal control. So, Dave and I, and we're going to be meeting with the congressional delegation to see if we can get something going. The MD, I think we have a better way of going about doing that than MD. So, we're going to try to see if we can get some movement by the feds, because they're the ones that are saying that you have to have these tests that are aligned to state standards, and that's why they're saying, MD is saying they have to go with the MCAs. That's one of the reasons why they have, they have concerns whether they can sell the ACT to the feds as a suitable, acceptable proficiency test. But this is, this is the first time they've ever ta- and I think they're only talking to us as far as this, as the Bloomington District about this. So, we have a great opportunity, not making any promises, but we, this is, this is a possibility.
It's an encouraging sign.
Well, it's, it's heavy lifting though, because they're asking us to do some things, and we have to color within the lines, and the lines are pretty limited in what they're telling us we can and cannot do. So, they're looking at Dave, saying, "What can you come up with?" So, that's, so we, we have a follow-up meeting with the commissioner.
Yeah, I'm intrigued with the high school especially, and we, we liked the ACT for all. We said we would do it even if the state wasn't reimbursing us for part of it, but also, if we have to give the MCAs, maybe we would give the short version paper and pencil, like they were suggesting, do it at the end of the year. You could do all the testing in one day, instead of, of, you know, having to use the computers to test over multiple days. So, at least we're throwing these ideas around.
Excuse me, I want to clarify something. On that shorter written test, it would have to be done by Pearson, who is a testing company. So, they would have to come up with the items for that shorter test. But it's the first time they've ever said anything about a shorter test at the year end.
I guess this is directed, I hate to bring up the political aspect again, but in your meetings, your day with other districts, you know, are they playing a wait-and-see game? Or are any of them really trying to come up with some? I know that innovative zone thing is, is high on some, but are they, are other districts' superintendents and directors coming up with other options? Or are they just playing to wait and see what the legislature was going to do?
The unfortunate thing is, they've run up to the same roadblock about, about having the map replace the MCAs, and then now they're looking at cutting costs, so what they're doing is they're, some of them are giving up on the map test, which is really unfortunate.
Yeah.
Because we would like to disaggregate the map data, have Dave get the data from other districts, so we can disaggregate the map growth data, so we can get subgroup results, so we can look at how our EL students are doing with respect to growth with other map districts. That'll be a breakthrough. Dave can do it, he has the ability to do that. We've been talking to other districts, but now they're telling us they're going to move away from the map.
Yeah.
Which is really short-sighted, I think, because if they only look at cost, it's the reason for moving away from it. It's not, not good.
We're going to, we're going to talk to the MAP, NWA folks and see what's possible. At one point, they said that I could get into all of the national data and do my own analysis, but it, but it would be nice to have partners within Minnesota. EL students in California and New York might not be similar to, to our population, so...
Challenge indexes.
But either way, we are going to explore possibilities. We want to maximize the growth for our students who aren't making good, good progress, and we could learn from other people as well.
Our goal is this, we want to reduce the amount of testing.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they're open to hearing our proposals.
Mm-hmm. This was an excellent discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good conversation.
Excellent questions.
Anybody else?
Are they, are they still saying that they're going to give you access to this data?
It, it's a possibility. They have a data site, we have good relationships with NWA, former director of research is on their board. It's a possibility, but it's a lot of work too, so, you know, we'll see.
Excuse me, you need to think about one thing. Unless NWA strategically changes, if this, if this movement starts where districts are dropping the map because of cost, it's going to be a problem for them as a business.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's going to be our conversation with NWA.
Mm-hmm.
They need to make some strategic changes to their position, and start sharing us data, so we can hopefully position MAP as the test that is informative, especially if we can break it down by subgroup growth. So, that's where things are at.
Just one last comment, I just want to say, send a big thank you to our teachers who are, you know, the people who are directly responsible for making sure that our students are successful in, in those tests.
Yeah, we had a big celebration over at Indian Mountains. I even sang a song for them about data.
You took Jim, our board member.
Yeah, I'll come up with a tune.
I guess the only thing I was going to add is, I was also going to piggyback on what Don said, we could have maybe our legislative committee talk about some of these things that we could, maybe have that be one of our agenda items outside of budgeting. Yeah, the challenge index, I mean, it seems reasonable to say, if you have a student that doesn't read in English, that it's going to be hard for them to be proficient in a reading test in English, so it's hard to sort of penalize someone for that. Or, you know, if they're special ed, if you have severe dyslexia, and the words aren't straight on, I don't know what, what exactly that means, I just know it's hard to read. It's going to be a hard time reading. I know one of the things when I looked at, at the math, what was expected on the MCAs, is I said, "A lot of this wasn't even a math problem as much as it is a vocabulary problem." And I know even my, my son, he had, when he was in like, second grade or something, he got one of his questions wrong, because he read the word F-O-R as being, I need to add four, the number four, because it says four, so it's four plus this, right? And it's like, "No, that's a different four." And even some of the question, I, I remember one of them, it was, it was like, you know, "How many different answers are this?" And it was like, negative, the square root of negative x times this, you know, it's like, "How many answers do you have?" And it was like, "Well, that's not asking you to like, solve a question, it's understanding, you know, how square roots are derived." And so, I, I don't know the answer, but it's, it seems like we need to do something, because it, it doesn't seem like only, whatever, forty percent of our kids, or thirty percent of our kids actually know math. If we were saying, "Put numbers on a page, can you multiply ten times fifty?" I mean, you know, they're going to know that, but when you write it out, "Well, Fred, you know, went to the store and had three, you know, bags of apples, and there's, each one is this many ounces," and you're like, "Hey, wait, what does O-Z stand for?" You know, and at, well, MSBA, yeah, it could be, yeah, it could be a lot of, a lot of things, and at the MCA or MSBA conference, they were talking about that, how sometimes, you know, if you come from, you know, a different country, yeah, the abbreviations mean something completely different. So, I don't know, we need to do something. So, thank you for all the work that you're, that you're doing. And I guess that's, that's all I got. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just had one more question. So, in, in your understanding, the state is kind of waiting for the fed money before they can make any kind of commitment, and the fed is playing, still playing a game. So, I mean, we're, we're kind of caught, when we get into the cost factor, we're kind of caught, we have to do our own thing. We can't rely on the state and/or the federal determinations.
It's not about the, excuse me, it's not about the money, it is about timing right now. The US Department of Education is still in transition. They do have their budget coming up, that has to be passed on September thirtieth. And that, so many of the policies are tied to money, but nothing's set so far, so everything is still messaging from the fed, saying they want to change stuff, they want to loosen things up, but nothing's come down officially.
Right.
And every time we're talking to the assistant commissioner, he said every other week, he talks to somebody else at the Department of Ed, because the previous person had moved on. So, I think the way to approach this thing is through the congressional delegation, and see if we can, not just ours now, I'm talking to lobbyists, because this has to be a statewide effort, not just Bloomington's effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to board member reports. Who'd like to start us off? Director Burks.
Director Burks. All right, this one's a, another short and sweet one. Had a great time this morning over at Jefferson for the district's back-to-school celebration. This is the day where all the staff that can make it come together in the, and today it was in the auditorium for a fifty-three minute program, I did time it. And then, of course, there's an opportunity for coffee and conversation in the lunchroom afterwards, and, and that was, that was just as important as the presentation, is the conversation afterwards, getting a chance to reconnect with people over the summer, catch up, meet some new, new team members, depending on, on who's working in your, in your building or your particular area. It's always fun to see so many people come back, refreshed, relaxed, and, and ready to rock and roll. So, that's, it was just a really fun time this morning. Also, I'm going to, I'm going to just give another, in addition to the PSA I gave last meeting, was the bus stop. The stop-arm violation fine went up this year from three hundred to five hundred, and if you're, if you're, if you don't find that imposing enough, I would ask that you just take a little bit extra time when you, when you take your student to school, or when you get your student off the bus. I've got a little card here, I can get some more, I'm not going to read it all for everyone, but it looks like the, the most dangerous place on the bus is directly in front, and then the right rear. So, if the students can be helped and taught wherever and whenever, obviously stay away from the front of the bus. It's really difficult when the driver's in the bus to see smaller children down front, and then the right rear, just can't see down there. But if anyone wants one of these cards, I'm sure I can get some from the transportation department. I'm sure Anne Marie would like to hand these out. Just to, I'm, I'm just going to keep pounding away on this each meeting until people tell me to stop. It's really, really important that all of our kids are safe. They get there safe, they come home safe, take a few extra minutes, and, and whatever it is that you need to do, but slow down, be student-aware, if I can say it that way. Thank you very much.
I think, good time last week, Jefferson, since I have a grandson, and going to Jefferson, going back to, back to school in the open house, and seeing so many activities that the kids, kids perform and participate in. It was, it was, remind me of my earlier life. And the same thing over at Kennedy. So, there, it's a really good experience for incoming freshmen to meet some of the seniors and to hear them talk positively about it. One of the reasons I was at Kennedy was I befriended an immigrant family from Pakistan. They've been only here three months, and they're associated with, with our church somewhat. So, one of the boys was going to be a freshman, and one of the girls is going over to Normandale. And so, I said, "Well, here, let me take you over to Kennedy." And so, we went over to Kennedy and went through registering and getting enrolled, and he had to take the ELL test, and, and then we came over here to talk to the HR department, because they wanted to see if they could apply for some jobs at the school, after school, or whatever else. They're very well-educated, but, once again, nothing transfers totally from another country, even another state, to here in Minnesota. So, then we also, I asked them a couple other questions about healthcare and so forth. So, we wound up going over to Hennepin County to see the VEP, to see about some community services. So, it reminded me that there are so many people, immigrants, and even, even other people, that are not aware of all of the possibilities and opportunities that they have. And it's just, you know, up to us privately to help out, and to try and bring them into the fold, and let them know that people do care, and, and wherever they're from, whatever their background is, we just want to be able to help. So, that's my, that's my sermon for tonight.
I just want to mention, I should have mentioned it at our last meeting, and I didn't, about the Education Foundation's golf tournament that was held, held the last week in July. They raised almost fifty thousand dollars, over a hundred and twenty golfers, and our students and staff will reap the benefits. So, Education Foundation of Bloomington is doing a lot of good work for our students and staff here. I just wanted to give them a shout-out. Thanks.
Sure.
Well, since we have our new schools this fall, I've been able to attend referendum meetings, both at Normandale Hills and Valley View Middle School. They, both schools have meetings every Friday, so it's been nice to get to know some of the, some of the people there working towards passing the referendum. I also had a chance to work a couple referendum tables at some back-to-school events, and this morning, a great event for the back-to-school. You know, all the staff did great, but for, one of the highlights I wanted to mention quickly was when a student came out and recognized Flora for all of her work that she does. I served on the Human Rights Commission with her a number of years ago, and I thought it could not have been better to have them also recognize her. I can think of a more deserving person in all the years that she's put into our schools and our community, so that was really touching. I also had lunch at Normandale Hills Elementary today, and enjoyed meeting and seeing some familiar faces and meeting some new ones. And then, last, I wanted to share that Valley View Middle School had a conversation with their staff and said, their leadership said, "What are some words that describe what we do here?" And then, what they came up with, they put on their shirts this year for their staff shirts. So, just wanted to share everybody their shirts. It says, "Inspire, engage, honor, and connect." And so, these are, these are the shirts that all the staff was wearing at the back-to-school night, and I thought, that was just for the sixth grade, if, the one for all the grades is this week. So, I just wanted to share it with you guys, and thought, "What a great thing that they put that on our shirts." So, that's it, thank you.
Yes? Any else? Any else? I just want to say, the back-to-school celebration this morning was great, it was nice to see all the people, there was a lot of energy, and the marching band did an excellent job, very impressed, and with the, the Jackson Five tune that they threw in there, that was, that was very nice, I was singing along. I think Dawn was taking a video, I think she maybe got me singing along.
No.
So, I believe that brings us to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Three bits of good news. First is that we built our budget based upon an enrollment, student enrollment count, and as of right now, based upon information that we received, we will be above that count for this coming school year. So, that's great news. Normandale Hills Elementary School has been recognized as the Minnesota School of Excellence, as the Minnesota School of Excellence, by the Minnesota Elementary School Principals' Association. This award is given to schools that show a commitment to 21st century teaching and learning. The MSBA issued a press release today, and will be issued one as a district shortly. The last thing is that Rod Zivkovich, our business manager, collaborated with Norman Community College to come up with a new financial arrangement on how we finance PSCO students attending Norman Community College. The arrangement optimizes what our district gets financially for that student, and in turn, we're able to increase the amount we pay Normandale for the tuition for that student. So, and this thing was done a couple of years ago. Minskou leadership and other districts have heard about this win-win innovative arrangement, so Rod and the Normandale Community College Financial VP will be making a presentation on this program at the upcoming Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board meeting. That meeting is attended by board members and superintendents, so it's good news. We're willing to share, it's not top secret, all districts should be using this same arrangement. We're willing to share, it's not top secret, all districts should be using this same arrangement. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Call this meeting adjourned.